United States of America, in due degree, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Get right into it here. The first item is I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media 24 hours prior.
So moved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blanford, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we got the council workshop. We're not having one because we're having a meeting tonight. So there's nothing there. Public comment. I don't think we have anything registered in advance. Anybody got any public comment tonight? Hearing none. We're moving on. No public hearings, no old business, because we like new business, so we'll start out with that. First item up is the pay request for the 2024 water main improvement project. Mr. Dunst?
Jason.
Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to talk change order and pay estimate at the same time, if that's all right. There's both of those items on the agenda. The change order is included in the pay request, which is why I wanted to touch on that first. So, a quick update on the water main project. Last week, Nettleton Excavating did complete the valve work, piping work that was approved with change order number two. So the water valves, plus one additional one, was replaced. Friday, they were able to complete the pavement patching. And this morning, the curbs were backfilled, traffic control was removed, and their equipment was moved out of town. So all work is complete, so we're here tonight with some final closeout paperwork for this project. Start with change order number three for the project. This change order, while they were excavating for the two new insertion valves that were approved as part of change order number two, at the Eighth Street and Highway Three intersection, it was discovered that the existing eight-inch valve that was in the valve manhole there was leaking, leaking out the top into the dirt. So the plan was just to leave the valve there, but we didn't want to leave the valve at that time, which meant we were back to the traditional way of cutting in, physically cutting pipes, shutting the water system down to install the new valve. To help with operations, the decision was made that city was going to furnish one of the valves to the contractor, keep some of the costs down, and actually install two new valves at that location instead of just the one, a total of three instead of just the two, two by the cut-in methods. So this change order includes the, either originally bid unit prices, which is the contractor furnishing the materials, or the new bid items, like for the eight-inch water main, the eight-inch gate valve, for the ones where the city did furnish some of the materials. City also furnished some of the water main fittings, not all of them. So there's two items included on this change order for several of the different items that were installed. So the total, and then we, I guess the last item there, we deleted the one of the eight-inch insertion valves. So the net increase with this pay estimate in the contract amount is $6,567. So any questions on the change order? I'll move into the pay estimate.
Not hearing any.
Okay. So the pay estimate that's been provided is the final pay estimate for the project. It has all of the final quantities. This pay estimate, from comparing it to change order or pay estimate number two, this pay estimate includes only change order number two work and change order number three work, as I just discussed. Change order number two work was the insertion valves, the one at Eighth Street, and then the two by Quick Star. And the total value of work completed with change order number two is $89,569. There was a little bit of an increase in the pavement patching, pavement removal work due to the work at Eighth Street. They had to make that, take out a little extra pavement there to get all that work done. And for change order number three, the total amount for that change order is $6,567. So the last page of the pay estimate has a summary of all the work. It lists all three change orders there, but looking at the revised contract price, including the change orders, is $598,180.50. Since this, the contractor's paid based on unit prices and quantities of work complete, the final value of work complete is $573,731.50. So we did come in under the revised contract price, looking after those change orders were added in. Subtract the retainage at 5%. The previous two pay estimates, the net amount due to Brian Nettleton Excavating at this time is $91,329.20. B and K does recommend approval of both the change order and the pay estimate. Just a note on the budget, we've been tracking the ARPA budget. The expenditure's out of there. And using the final value of work completed, that $573,000, you exceeded your ARPA funds by $3,881.14, so I'd say we hit it pretty close, all things considered. With that, are there any questions on those two items?
You just absorb that $3,000, then.
Take the valve back out. We had an extra valve.
More valves.
I was sidewalk superintendent on that valve job and had some pictures on Facebook, and you could see water leaking out of the top of that valve. And I think they done a fabulous job, you know, and the whole project with no weather delays, everything went smooth.
Good crew to work with. Very good.
All right. Any other questions for Jason at this point?
We just need to vote on these separately.
Yes, correct. Yep. I got that. So actually, kind of, the first bullet point there is the suggesting the, take a motion to approve pay request number three for the 2024 water main improvement project.
Let's, Mayor, if I could?
Yep.
Add in the motion in the amount of $91,329.20.
Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the change order number three for the water main improvement project as well, also 2024. So I'd entertain a motion to approve change number, change order number three to the water main improvement project.
Yeah, can we add in the amount of that to be $6,567? Thank you.
I make a motion to approve change order number three.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item up is the considerate referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the request to vacate 500 block of First Street Southeast. I'll kind of give you some background on this here.
Yeah, so this is 500 block, First Street Southeast, outlined in red. There's been a lot of property issues, arguments, dissatisfaction with this, what is officially a city street, that ends, and one property down here has access on this end. And you got Vince Gunderson owns this, this, and this. This is Tom and Jennifer Rooney. This is Randy and Pam DeVries. This is K and M Trucking. A lot of dissatisfaction and arguments about different things in the maintenance street, who's accessing where, who's parking where. So city staff is recommending that the council consider vacating this. Since the general public does not use this, this is used primarily by these adjacent property owners. Our ordinance for vacating streets states that any proposal to vacate a street or alley shall be referred by the council to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its study and recommendation prior to further consideration by the council. So we're putting this idea in front of the council. If it's something that you would consider and you want the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about and have them weigh in on, then we can send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If it does go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we would have the property owners, you know, alert them, have them come in, give their opposition or support for something like this. And then, of course, any recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission would come back to the councils, where you would also have a public hearing on that. One note is that this property, this would be their only access, so we would suggest that a easement agreement be drafted that would run with the land, so it wouldn't terminate. If they sold it, it would go to the next owner and the next owner. So give them permanent access to their property, so they wouldn't be landlocked. The other ones would have access. We would, you know, assuming everybody's agreeable, we would sell off for a dollar portion to each one that's adjacent to it, and DeVries would get this down here. So up for discussion on the concept of that.
Mr. Blanford?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see you.
You addressed my question. My burning question was, what are the DeVries' is going to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the big get in there. Mr. Blanford?
So on that, because I've actually used that before, because I know individuals down there, and I've actually used it as a through street around the corner. Would we be able to post signs letting them know that it's not a public street? I know they have different verbiages that they put on the signs, and maybe put like an orange flag to kind of give awareness, so people don't cut through there and if it everything goes through.
So if we vacated this, we would take down any street sign that would be there to, that wouldn't give anybody the idea that it is a city street. Also, property owners, they would, you know, be free to put up whatever signage they would like.
Okay.
As well to control traffic. Private drive or things like that, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So when we, we actually plow this now, of course, in the wintertime, how far down do we plow into DeVries' yard? Do we just turn around, turn around, or how far into DeVries' do we?
You know, Doug?
My understanding, it goes down about where that black spot is, a big pile of snow is left on the, would be what's on the southwest corner.
Okay.
And then the guys stop. They don't go under DeVries' property, from my understanding.
Right.
But as you can see in this picture, there's vehicles parked, parked in what is the city street. So.
Well, I mean, there's vehicles parked on my city street too, but I don't close it down.
Yeah, well, it's in the city, it's in the traffic portion of this.
Right, yeah.
This would be parking area, this would be the traffic portion. It doesn't function as a normal city street. It's not primarily used by the public. It's primarily used by these property owners.
Right. Until I want to go visit the DeVries family.
They have an easement for access.
You have access to the.
They have easements.
Do these property owners know that it was on the agenda, if they didn't pay attention?
We did not contact them, but they will be alerted if it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think they should definitely weigh in on it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, because the one other thing, I mean, and it's going to come down to the property motions if we do that, about Jeff Spear, you know, sometimes his trucks will drive through here, delivery trucks, and come around here and then deliver to him too, so, you know.
But he's crossing private property, doing that.
Exactly. He's already going through, so you would just have to work out the details with the property owners.
Yeah, in the end, it may not happen. They may, you know, be opposed to it and.
Kind of the, kind of the first steps here of trying to alleviate, you know. And again, the, once, if that takes place, then there, the properties are, it's their responsibility to plow the snow. We won't be down there trying to plow on this, plow on this.
So kind of like the trailer park.
That's private drive as well, you're right.
Yep.
I, I'm not really for the way it's handled here, but I know they'll get their say. I know they will. But if I was a property owner and all of a sudden I read in the paper that they discussed about shutting my street down, I'd be a little miffed. So Vinny owns the top three properties on the right-hand side?
Yes.
It's just kind of a obscure situation we got down here, and I think that just trying to keep all, keep all parties happy is going to be tough, but, you know, hey, we're open for discussion. We're going to have a public hearing. Everybody's got their, you know, they have their say, and.
So do you think the property owners are going to be more happy? We are no longer responsible for that path, that street?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't really know what you're saying.
We need to find out. We need to find out.
So when you do that, when you draft the easement, do you require a width of stuff? Looking right there, you see that one semi that's kind of parked in the road, and then you see on the east side there, there's a couple trucks and trailers there. Do they have it where, when you divide this into four, where they would have their part? You know, because I know, personally, I know a couple people of them don't get along down there, so if it's private, I could see the guys basically double or triple sack in trailers down there, because it's, is private. So how much width do you get on an easement, something like that?
That's up to the attorney, to whoever drafts this, you know, but I would imagine it would be at least one, you know, lane width, if not two.
Yeah.
The idea isn't so that they can build into these, you know, but I can see that could be an issue, and it has to be addressed in the easement agreement.
I can see us getting two feet of snow, and DeVries is being stuck at home for a week.
I think it's worth asking the Planning and Zoning Committee for their input anyway, and go from there.
And I've talked to a few of the people down here, and they just kind of keep them up to date. And when we get, if we decide to go push this to planning and zoning, then I'll make them aware of it, say, here's where we're at, this is how the process works.
Yeah, and we'd send them a letter too, all the agents of property owners, notifying them of the meeting, time, date.
Yeah, I think that's the right approach, because I think a lot of them, you know, if I was in Randy's shoes, I would want to make sure that I have access to get down there.
Yeah, if we can't, if, if the city does want to pursue this, we certainly cannot do it unless there's a, an agreeable, you know, an easement agreement that's agreeable to the DeVries'.
Exactly.
So what is our motivation for doing this?
Well, it's.
Maybe I missed something.
It's not really used by the general public. It's used by the property owners down there, but yet it's a city street, and we maintain it, and there's, always seems to be discontent down there related with this. And so this is an option to.
Discontent with the city, or just discontent among the neighbors?
Property owners, city, yeah, maintenance.
The biggest thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, this is kind of the first step of saying, okay, we'll do what we can to try to alleviate this, but we need you guys weighing in.
Yeah, and this, and this in the end may not be the right option.
Right.
It's an option to consider.
So if they don't move forward with it, will we enforce that, having the right-of-way, where that is actually the street?
Yeah, in fact, the police department watched that. They, yeah, they've issued notices for various things down there even recently. Not sure what the notices were for, but, yeah.
So that would kind of push them towards wanting to do that, because it would give them more area to park, and it would help us out, because we wouldn't have to take the plow down there and then worry about pushing rock into somebody's yard, or into their garden, or whatnot. I think it would be beneficial.
Any other comments?
I just think it's done backwards. I think that, I think the people in question should have been called here tonight, or got a letter, letting them know, hey, this is on the agenda, or something. I think this is just.
Well, to that point, Pat, is that the agenda is published for 24 hours in advance. It's on the radio, it's in the paper. They had opportunities to come over, but I think this, looking at this, to me, this is the first step, is, P and Z may not even want to do this. They might just say, no, that's stupid. And then we're, we're out of that. Or we can have everybody in the same, on the first night, and we can have a big row, and everybody scream at each other, or we can.
Sounds good.
Just get this done first, and then move into any, any further steps that we may take.
Yeah, I think it's the right approach, because a lot of people could sit back and think about it, and they can see this map, and maybe they can have a conversation with one of the other property owners, and have a clear understanding that there isn't going to be an easement, and set the expectations, rather than being like, okay, everybody's here, well, I've been parking here for 20 years, or whatever. You set the expectation ahead of time, I think it would be a lot smoother process, so.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to refer this to the P and Z Commission, to the request to vacate that block, and see what they have to say.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blanford. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Next item up, on a lighter note, entertain a motion to produce, approve claims as submitted by staff, in the name amount of $379,138.96.
I move we approve the claims.
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Davies, second by Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We got a question on that.
Yep.
The spraying, didn't we usually have staff do that?
How long has Coon had been spraying, Doug? Quite a while.
So what's he spray? Banshee, cemetery?
That was a cemetery.
Well, we got staff in the cemetery, wouldn't it be cheaper to pay them to get a license to spray? Do we have the equipment? Well, how did we do it before?
He used to have a sprayer on the Cushman, I think.
Right.
I don't know what the condition of that is, or do you still have it? I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll move on to, we've got resolution number 2024-30. This is the resolution accepting the 2024 water main improvement project. Mr. Dunst?
Jason?
Jason.
Last item on your agenda for the 2024 water main improvement project, the completion of work, the city is required to accept the improvements after the engineer has filed a certificate of completion stating that the work has been performed in substantial accordance with the plans as facts. So we have filed that certificate, bond council prepared the resolution, and this resolution essentially starts the clock on the four-year maintenance bond that was provided by the contractor at the time of contract award. Questions?
Any questions?
How much are we holding on that?
Uh, 5%, so.
And that's for four years, or?
Nope. You hold the 5% for 31 days, and if there's no claims filed, that gets released.
Okay.
But the contractor furnished a four-year maintenance bond from their surety, basically for any claims with defective workmanship or materials on the project, so.
So would that cover any leaks?
Yeah, if it's within this news, anything new put in, and it started leaking, yeah.
Okay.
Unless they could dig it up and prove it wasn't their fault, obviously, but.
Thank you.
All right. Any other additional discussion? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2024-30.
I make a motion or approve resolution 2024-30?
Motion by Mr. Lamos.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Greifey. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Greifey.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Blanford.
Aye.
Mr. Lamos.
Aye.
Mr. Hodge.
Aye.
And Mr. Davies.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution is approved. Moving to the next items, there's a consent agenda. This includes the previous minutes from the 33rd day, November, that's a big word, 14th, 2024, regulation, regular session. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, December 2012, December 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM, at the city council chambers, and approves alcohol licensing to AZ and Z, A and Z Liquor, 2721, Second Central Avenue, West Hampton. And JOD Inc., doing businesses, El Valley, Tienda, at 212, 4th, 1st Avenue, Hampton. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Palmer makes the motion, second by Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry about the stuttering. He brings us down to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Yeah, just a little bit on a nuisance update. There was five new notices that went out last week. I picked up where you left off. 10 notices went out today. Four municipal citations were served over the weekend, and those were for 314, 2nd Avenue Northwest, 320, 3rd Street Northwest, 215, 3rd Street Northeast, and 316, 1st Avenue Northeast. So we have court dates set up for those, hoping to get orders eventually to get those taken care of. I know there was mention of the Getz House and the 300-block 3rd Avenue. That has been cleaned up. Doug and I have been in communication with him, so Doug can get into the property and inspect that. He might have more to say about that later. get into the property and inspect that. He might have more to say about that later. We applied for and were rewarded the Barkema Grant. We are very appreciative to them, and the work they do in the community. We have a five-year pledge with them, and the first year is for 12,000, for a total of 44,000 pledged. That money is going to go towards car camera system, which is aging and obsolete, and current, our current system is stored at the sheriff's office, and they have already upgraded theirs into a new system. So, that's where that money's going. We have delighted parade on Saturday. We've been working with REC on preparations for that. We have active shooter training scheduled for the library. It sounds like the library's going to close for the morning, and while we do that with them and some of the county libraries. And we're starting to work on the budget for next year, thinking of what we need once, and kind of looking into the long term, so we're not caught up with something that we need three years from now, right now. So, just working on all that. So, there's questions.
Any questions, Mr. Morrison?
We had a Jake Brake ordinance passed about 20 years ago. Do you ever give tickets for Jake Breaks?
I can't say that we have.
A person complained to me that lives on Highway 3 East. They, they hear them all the time. And I hear them occasionally, but it's like, they just don't read the sign or something.
Yeah, I'll have to look and see what the current signage is. It's been a while since.
It's out there all the way across.
Is there a sign?
Yeah.
Coming either way, yeah.
It's right at the edge of town.
All four.
Yeah, I can, it's oddly enough, we were discussing that two days ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll push that out to the guys so they can keep watch on that.
Well, thank you.
All right. Any questions for Chief Morrison? I hearing any. Thanks, sir. Mr. Tarr?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just want to remind everybody, Compost Site, last day we're open is this Saturday. We'll be open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, weather permitting. Staff's been doing a great job. They've actually been out there this week even in some of these cold temps, so trying to finish strong. Also a reminder, they will be closed for the holiday on Friday, so Wednesday and Saturday, those are our last two days, so let's get out there and, and try to utilize that if we can, folks. As we talked about tonight, the water valve project and water main project's complete. I want to thank Nettleton. They did a great job as general contractor on that job. They were really super to work with from our standpoint. And then we'll thank V and K Engineering as well, because they've been with us every step of the way on that as well. So, very pleased to work with both those, those organizations, so that was great. Street Department guys, a lot of that alley maintenance, we got complete last week. We're still, we're on our second round of doing some street sweeping yet. Christmas decorations as well have been going out, so you've probably been seeing some of that. I'm going to shoot down here, too. We want to thank the Barkema Grant folks as well, because we did receive a grant ourselves for the Vintage Light Project with the LED conversion and new globes. So, that was pretty super to get that, and we're very thankful and grateful. Met with the DNR last week in a meeting at the LEC to discuss new floodplain mapping modeling. As you know, 2012, I believe, was the last time that they worked with FEMA to get some of that modeling and mapping accomplished, so they're just updating. They keep us in the loop on those type things, and very interesting. And they're hoping to have the mapping completed, oh, I think, late 2025, the way it sounds. Doesn't affect a whole lot of properties in our community, however, it's very interesting and it's there for when you need it. So, it's nice. Working on the budget, as Chief said, going to be an interesting year next year as well. So, we're going to dig in and, and see what we can do there to save money where we can save it, and then see what our needs are. Still working on a couple of nuisance issues that we have court orders for, so we'll keep working on those. The wastewater mapping project is nearing completion as well. There's just a handful of manholes left to open and get shots out of, so we're hoping to have that all buttoned up here in the next few weeks. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. Winter prep, too. The guys, we got the, I think we've gone through the sanders, got all those up and running. Plows are ready to go, so, you know, just in case old man winter shows up, we should be ready. So, we got sand and salt in the shed, we're ready to rock. Other than that, I think I'll entertain any questions or concerns they may have.
Mr. Hodge?
Doug, behind me, that house that fell down, and then we leveled everything. What are those yellow flags that go down through there for?
Probably marking a gas line bill, I would think.
Oh, okay.
And Mr.?
Earlier this year, I was asking you about attending a DOT meeting, the condition of Highway 65 South and, and making Highway 3, 3, 3 lane with a turning lane.
Right.
So we would get funding to fix the traffic signals. Do you have any updates on that?
I don't on when they're going to have that next meeting. I've actually asked and requested from the local guys, so still waiting to kind of hear on that. But I've also, Greg Moore, local, I've discussed it with him. And then Mike Frank was a really big asset for us and, and a great guy to talk to up out of Mason City. He was one of the right-of-way guys, but he's actually left and took another position in the midst of some things here. So, I'm just going to have to keep my eyes open, work with Greg a little bit, find out when that next five-year plan is.
Yeah.
Barry, what, what was that about the turning lanes and?
Well, at one time, this DOT was going to fix our traffic signals, and then we'd have a center turning lane and two outside lanes.
Well, we voted against them turning lanes some time ago.
Well, I think we should readdress it if they're going to pay for the traffic signals.
I think they'll pay for them traffic signals whether they're turning lanes or not. I think they're turning lanes are dangerous.
They held us hostage over that. They held us hostage over that. They said, you either do this, or we're never going to fund it again. So, yeah, Barry and I were part of that. And Jim was there.
A lot of towns have made their turning lanes out. I know New Hampton has.
I don't see a problem with it in Iowa Falls. I think it's a good idea.
Didn't you tell me that?
Well, as long as you drive, you couldn't possibly see a problem with it. You gotta be fast on the way.
I asked, I asked about it.
This is something we should have on the agenda.
Before, too, and I was told that studies have shown that accidents actually increase with the turning lanes. Am I saying that right? Is that?
They have. When they're initially put in, they do.
Okay.
Food for thought and more further discussion, it sounds like, so.
Let's just ask Vinnie what he wants. Let's just ask Vinnie what he wants.
All right, anything else for Mr. Tarr?
Give it to planning and zoning.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You bet.
Mr. Dunn?
At the next workshop, which is December 6, I believe, we'll be discussing pharmacy property options, as we heard from ISG, what the options were. Just want to remind the public, the last day for burning of yard waste is November 30. Thank you to Jason for assisting with the ARPA-funded Water Main Improvement Projects. Things went well, and it's nice to get that wrapped up before the end of the calendar year, so appreciate that. Any questions?
None, thank you. So we'll go to Compost, Council reports. Start with Mr. Hodge.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I have no report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Greifey?
I just want to mention a couple of Franklin County businesses that I think deserve five stars. I got my car back from Butch Grohlke and his auto body team. They did a fantastic job and very happy with that. And then, oh.
What happened to your car?
Somebody hit it. Mark got the bad guy for me. The furnace went down in the ceramic studio. Yay, the money pit. Paul Furman from Latimer came to my rescue on Sunday afternoon and got it up and running again. Can't wait to get that bill, but hey, you did a great job. Last Friday, we celebrated, celebrated Pink Friday downtown, and that is the small businesses' version of Black Friday. Now we're preparing for the weekend. It's a hectic, busy weekend for us. We have Friday on court. First and Second Vintage has a special surprise bartender. Shop Small Saturday, and with Shop Small Saturday, we have pop-up at the ceramic studio, and then there's Light Up the Night Festivity Saturday afternoon and evening. And raffle tickets are still on sale, and I'm ahead of Jim so far, so let's keep it going.
You have a free drinks over there?
Where?
At your place. You said there's a surprise bartender.
That's Wine Walk.
Yeah, for some wine?
And I have a really great bartender. You got to come in and see him.
Him or her?
Him.
It's a celebrity.
It's a celebrity, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll bet. Santa Claus.
Maybe.
Could be. All right. Anything else, Jerry?
Nope, that wraps it up.
All right, thank you. Mr. Palmer?
On Wednesday, I met with the board, or an organizing group of what they call the North Iowa Impact Team. It serves north-central Iowa as far as, they want to identify where food insecurities are and where food pantries are, and get people connected to both. Over the last, oh, couple days, I had a complaint about the Franklin County Food Pantry. It's not our deal, so I gave them a name to call, and they were going to call it. But the West Fork folks have a food pantry up there. I'm not sure if La Luce has one, or they're working on one. And then, all around Mason City, you might see these little, little smaller food pantries where they put in baked goods or put in whatever. Quite a few people in Mason City donate to that. The pizza place we were at was the Corner Pizza and Ale Place, right off 65, you should go through town. And every night, they donate all their pizza, whatever's left over, and they donate it to this group, and then they take it to either Home of Shelter, the BG Clark Place, or some other locations in town. So, anyway, quite a network of, of places that they have when they have meals that are expired or expiring. And I learned quite a bit about that. I, I don't really want to be on their board, but I told them I'd come to a few meetings, and if they wanted to ever come and, and talk to our workshop or anything like that, I'd see about opening a few doors for them. So they are pretty appreciative of that. So, anyway, with winter coming up, I thought that'd be a good topic to, a good thing to go to and see what they're all about. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lamos?
No comment.
Thank you. Mr. Blanford?
Well, I know Doug touched on it. That street sweeper was out a lot, doing, doing a very good job on the street, so I think that was a very smart purchase for us to help keep the streets clean. Good job with that. And then I want to thank everyone for doing all the decorating, all their efforts down there, getting ready for Light Up the Night. I've seen a couple little sneak peeks on stuff that they're going to be doing down there, a couple paintings that's looked like it's going to be neat. So, be sure everyone goes out there Saturday night for Light Up the Night. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It can be cold, but let's bundle up and let's go. All right, Mr. Davies?
Yeah, Pat, thanks for mentioning food pantry. St. Patrick's Catholic Church has a food pantry. We get a pallet of food in every two weeks from, I can't think of the name of Des Moines, because I volunteer and help with that a little bit. But, yeah, we go through food pretty quick there. I attended the library board meeting last Wednesday, and I have a saved a date for everyone. On October 6, 2025, they're going to be recreating the dedication of the library that's 120 years old. That's the same weekend that Sat, that's on a Monday, that's 6. On Saturday is going to be the Vaudeville Show at the Windsor, and then on Sunday's Herman Nielsen. So that'll be a big historic type of weekend. And I'm on, like I said, I'm on a committee to help organize that rededication. And then last week also, sort of filling in from my position on the design committee for the chamber, I took some pictures of Upper Story Apartments and Chad Harrison's, where the fire was, that's completely gutted, and then three of Russ Gibson's properties. And we're going to put those photos and helping them fill out an application for design assistance from the State Main Street Program. So, hopefully, we'll get that done. When they give me that information, we can get that in there, and maybe that design architect will be able to come up in December yet, and then give them some renderings that they can use, hopefully then to apply for grants to get some Upper Story apartments, so.
Only one can apply a year per town.
It depends. There's two different grants.
Okay.
But I think right now, Russ would probably wait a year for like the big grant. So, maybe it would go on with Harrison's building. So, that's pretty good. And then finally, just happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, thank you. Real quick, Mayor's report tonight, I just wanted to mention the Barkema Grant. I have trouble saying that, but I practice. I think they do a lot of good in our, our community and surrounding communities, and, and I think it's a very gracious gift that we are able to use and utilize for our, for everybody, the churches, seat of the city, the hospitals, civic groups, stuff like that. I think it's just fabulous. Next time I get, I like to share our thank you notes. And I'm not Stephen Colbert by any, by any means, but we got the note from the Hampton Senior Center Board. Thank you for, for your donation, for our full fundraiser, and your support is very much appreciated. Appreciate it. I love hearing these, the people that take, especially the handwritten notes, come back and say, hey, thanks, you know, it means, it means the world. Next one here is, we'd like to thank you for the city of Hampton for being so flexible and supportive with the schools activities. We appreciate being able to host the community tail grade at the Banshell. This comes from our student counselor at the high school. So, you know, we're bringing up the kids right, I guess. So, and it's just always great to, to, people actually appreciate some stuff that's happening. So, other than that, Light Up the Night, enjoy. I heard there's going to be a surprise bartender. I don't know who that might be. And Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn the special, special regular session. Second by Mr., motion by Mr. Blanford, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fair agenda, thank you. It looks like, to me, that'd be a girl.